Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our study session. It is 5 o'clock on May 12th, and I will call this meeting to order. And we will begin. We now have four board members, and I know Mrs. Sears will be joining us shortly since I just spoke with her, and she was getting onto her computer. So that's why we're going to go ahead and begin because I think she'll be getting on quickly now. So I will turn the time over to Dr. Lesser for our study session.
All right, Madam President, members of the board, it is great to see you on Board Meeting Night, all in our virtual places. So good evening to you and to any viewers that we have. So we've got a couple of items for the work-study session today. And one of those is the MPS Energy Program update. And then also, we're going to talk about the Arizona School Board Association 2021 Political Action Priorities. So let's dig right into it, and I'm going to toss this over to Holly Williams.
Dr. Lesser, I'm sorry. I apologize for interrupting. This is Helen Hollins. We do have the procedures for study session that need to be read. And Mrs. Minor, I'm fine if you want me to go ahead and read those, or if you have those pulled up to be read.
I apologize. I skipped that one, and I have it right here, and I'll be more than happy to read it. Thank you, Mrs. Hollins, for pointing that out. Welcome to the study session of the Mesa Public Schools Governing Board. On March 30th, 2020, Governor Doug Ducey announced that Arizona schools would be closed for the rest of the year due to the COVID-19 health crisis. In early April, when his stay-at-home order was issued, governmental functions, including school board governing board meetings, were exempted from the order. So while it is legal to have an in-person school district governing board meeting, our district is choosing to exercise safe social distancing for our meetings by using a virtual meeting platform. The following will be the rules we are using for our meeting. Although members of the board are not gathered in a physical location, we do have a quorum in attendance at this meeting by video conference or telephone call. We are meeting by use of WebEx conferencing platform and live streaming through YouTube, which allows for members of the public to view and/or listen to this meeting. You can access the live stream at MPSAZ.org/live. If you need accommodations, please contact our assistant, Martha Head, Assistant to the Superintendent and Governing Board at 480-472-0201. And that is on your screen right now, both the website and the phone number. All other meeting procedures will adhere to board adopted procedures to the extent practicable. Hard time with that word, "practicable." A recording from this meeting will be available to the public via our district's Board Docs online software within three business days of the meeting. We apologize in advance for any unforeseeable difficulties and ask for your patience as we navigate unprecedented conditions. That is the word for 2020, "unprecedented." That's our word. Okay, now, take it away, Dr. Lesser, and you can continue. Thank you, Mrs. Hollins.
All right. Mrs. Hollins, thank you for keeping us on the straight and narrow here. I should have been helpful. I've been part of this for the last several weeks. So President Minor, sorry that I just dove into that and started moving along. So thank you, Mrs. Hollins. Well, I was at the spot where I was going to turn it over to Mrs. Williams and Mr. Thompson to talk with you about the MPS Energy Program update. So I'm going to say, Mrs. Williams, are you ready to take it over?
I am. Thank you, Dr. Lesser. Members of the board and President Minor, thank you for allowing us this time tonight to talk about the work that we've been doing to conserve energy in our district. It's an exciting time, and we have some great numbers to share with you tonight. And I'm excited to introduce our partners in this from Pierce Energy Planning, Tyler Sam and Scott Pierce. They will be doing our presentation tonight. As they share the information, if you have questions, please feel free to stop them and ask questions as we go. At the end of it, I'd like to give you a brief update on where we are with Green Teams. If you remember, that's the initiative to engage our schools in this work. And because of the closure, we've had to modify how we're doing that. So I'd like to give you an update at the end of the presentation about that. Scott, do you want to start us off with... Scott Thompson, excuse me, do you want to start us off with maybe how we got to be with Pearson and say a few words?
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Yes. It's almost, well, we're going on our, let's say, it's been a year, and this is kind of the year in review, right? So but one of the reasons that we got started with Pierce is because we really wanted to have an independent company that wasn't tied to any particular product. A lot of companies who do energy, provide energy equipment for your buildings also have the service of trying to save you money, but they want you to use their equipment to save money. What we really enjoy about the relationship here is that it is independent. They are a great watchdog and partner for us. As we've been going through this process with them even prior to the closures, they constantly monitor and share with us when they see unexpected things. And that's really helpful because we might put things in place thinking that a building is in an unoccupied mode or isn't running at a particular time. And with their oversight and partnership, they quickly let us know, no, you're running on a Sunday or a Saturday when you shouldn't be or something didn't. So we have plans, but they kind of verify our plans, I guess is the best way to put it. And we really enjoyed the partnership, both from my side with the operations and HVAC team and their partnership with us there. And then I know their partnership in the schools and the Green Teams has also been a great plus that hopefully we can get back off the ground beginning next year. But we really appreciate the partnership. We're going to see the results of it coming up, and we're excited where we're going to go with all this.
So Scott and Tyler, if you're ready, Ina, you can start the slideshow for us.
Great. Thank you, guys. Can you hear me okay? Am I off mute?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Well, thank you. Well, Madam President, members of the board, and Dr. Lesser, and everybody, Mr. Thompson, Mrs. Williams, thank you, guys, so much for the opportunity. It's been, over the past, you know, year-plus, it's been a privilege to support Mesa Public Schools in this initiative around, you know, managing energy and really getting our arms around that and helping seeing some savings. And we have some great information. I'm going to introduce one of our folks on the dedicated Mesa Public Schools Fusebox team, one of our senior sustainability managers, Tyler Sam. He's really the team lead within our organization that works on the ground with your folks there at the district as well. Tyler is going to, I'm going to kick off the, you know, the update here, and Tyler is going to jump in and actually talk to a little bit of some of the engagement with staff as well. And I think it'll be a good lead-in to the conversation at the end. So once again, it's a privilege. And let's see, can I control this here, it looks like, or should I just tell you to go... There you go, perfect. So we're going to run you through a few items here on the agenda. We're going to, first of all, we're going to really dive into the electric summary. Talk to you about where you were when we first started engaging with you around electricity, and then where we are currently, what we've done over that past year that have helped achieve those goals. You know, talk about the contract performance. It was just over a year ago where we had the privilege also to present to the governing board. And we laid out some, at that point in time, leading into this phase of the project that we're finishing up, we laid out some goals and objectives. And so we want to kind of get you up to speed with those. We're going to talk about some of the visibility and data, give you some examples of that. Tyler will touch on the Green Team's piece of it. And we'll finish it off with the unfortunate school closures. But what is that doing to your energy costs? And so we've done some great analysis for you and have some information to present there. And then finish it up also with what is looking forward, what do fiscal year '21, what opportunities are there that we can achieve? And what are some of those goals we have to, you know, set forth for the next year? Let's see, perfect. So just to give you a little bit of a background into, you know, because of the size of Mesa Public Schools, what we really wanted to do, coming into this first phase, is really in order for us to, we felt, be successful was to really carve out what we call your highest energy user. So there are 19 campuses. Two of those campuses have a couple of separate locations on there. But what we did is we carved these out and focused on these 19 campuses because they make up just over 50% of your total electricity spend at the district. So we really wanted to focus on those. The nice thing that you will see throughout this process is that indirectly, your other schools were able to see some of the benefit of some of the strategies that we put in place for these. But you'll see where we talk about these efficiency schools or Phase 1 schools. And those are, you know, really your high schools and junior highs. I mean, those are the schools that are consuming the most energy at the district. So we're going to look at an electric summary. And what we're going to look at with this will be for those phase, those efficiency schools, those Phase 1 schools. During the time period, May 2018 to March 2019, okay, you were just about 6 million, just over 6 million in electricity spend amongst those. This past 12 months, so obviously starting May 1 of 2019 through, this is just through the end of March of 2020. So at Q3 for your fiscal year, you know, we're coming in at about 5.4 million. So through the work that the team at the district did, was able to reduce usage by about 11.4% and cost about 10.3%. And there's one important note to just emphasize here is this is before the March 16th school closure or the school closures had any impact. So this was before that. So it was amazing savings, and you'll see from some later slides that there's even, there's a lot more savings, a reduction in cost from there. If we look at it from more of a location, campus-by-campus view, the majority of your locations here are just in these focus sites that we're looking at are seeing it, you know, at least a 10% reduction in usage. So you're seeing, you know, everything in the green, which means a decrease. And these are screenshots from our Fusebox software that we're tracking all your utility data in. But you're seeing, obviously, here over the last 11 months, some great, great reductions in your usage and cost. Now, if we pull this out to a district... You here. Having trouble going to the next slide here.
This is Nathan Myers. Are you trying to go forward or backward? Do you just give me the cue? And you want to go forward to the next slide?
I'll give you the cue, Nathan. Thank you. Appreciate it.
No problem.
Okay, great. So can you go back one for me? Skipped over one slide.
Or do you want to go back one more?
I'll go back one more here.
Got it.
Trying to get to, I might have skipped over one. All right, so here, I can give you the slide number. That's probably easier. Do you have... Slide seven. Give a slide seven there. Should be right after that one. It's the next slide right after that.
Yeah, that one's eight on my screen. Do you think we're missing something?
Oh, there must have been one that popped up. But so there's one slide. We'll make sure that gets in the copy here on that. But what I really wanted to get to is, as a district as a whole, not just the focused 19 campuses that we're looking at, the district actually saw a decrease overall of about 10.9% in usage and about 10.7% in actual cost. And so that decrease in cost, it came out to about $1.3 million in electricity across the entire district. So once again, we're focused on those efficiency, those Phase 1s locations. But because of a lot of the different strategies indirectly benefited that, those other campuses, those other locations.
So... Mr. Pierce, this is Pete Lesser. That slide that you're talking, that slide that you're discussing is actually in the slide that's attached, or in the presentation that's attached to the agenda. So the board does have access to that.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate that. And so it's the completed sections here. So we wanted to give you an idea of some of the strategies and some of the deliverables that our team was providing. And so just, you know, there's a lot of information here, but going through, highlighting some of the very important ones there is monthly reports. So what our team is doing is providing constant visibility into your utility data, really focused right now on electricity and gas. But obviously, being electricity is your largest cost. So what we find is if you're looking at and have visibility into the data constantly, and you're looking at it, that's driving the awareness. And that's where we're really seeing a lot of changes being done operationally. That's having a big impact here. Coming down a few bullets on the left-hand side, there's one specifically highlighted that says Carson Junior High Gas Credit. So that was last spring, and I believe you're probably possibly aware of that as well. But there was a gas credit that the city of Mesa provided back to the district of 156,000. And that was a broken, that was one broken gas meter that had gone back three years of inaccurate billings. So that was, you know, those are some of the things that we've really been working with the district folks and staff on, is really looking at some of those billing errors and making sure that you guys are being billed properly for that. Some of the other Green Team items, you know, kind of looking at on the right-hand side towards the bottom. And these are things that Tyler will be, you know, speaking to in a little bit. But we, you know, implement Green Teams at 21 of those locations, actually implemented Green Teams onsite, conducted trainings for Green Teams, looked at individual Green Team presentations at high schools, a Green Team leadership professional development. So not only is it data analytics and really driving the reporting and making sure that the right data is in the right, you know, folks' hands, but there's also that behavior element of this around Green Teams, and that's having a big impact as well.
Mr. Pierce is Nathan Myers again. I believe I had an older copy of your presentation. And in the meantime, while you were talking, I switched. So if you want me to go forward or backward, you and I should be on the same page now.
If you go back just one really quick, I know it's in the meeting minutes, and I know we kind of hard stopped here, so I won't spend too much time. Yeah, that's fine. We'll move on with this, Nathan, here. You can go to that contract performance slide. Okay, yep, perfect. So, you know, moving forward on, as far as the contract performance goes, you know, a little over a year when we set out to off this phase of the energy program, we created, you know, some goals that we felt were very, you know, very attainable based on our history and our experience in the data analytics piece. So if you go to that next slide there. So at that time, when we were basing, you know, our goals off of your fiscal year '18 electric spend, and once again, I'm talking about those Phase 1 schools, those higher-intensity energy users. And so in fiscal year '18, you had about $6.2 million spent on electricity. So our goal coming into this first phase was to really drive a 10% reduction in simply looking at the data and changing, tweaking a few things operationally to really drive into savings. So once again, May through March, so that 11 months, we still have April out there as well. But that 11 months is coming in at about $619,000. So average of about $56,000 in savings every month. So, you know, that $623,000 is well attainable, and we'll pull right by that for the month of April. We should have the April data in here, you know, within the week. So we should get that as well.
Scott, I just want to highlight, this is the Phase 1 schools again. As Scott mentioned earlier, we've saved over a million district-wide. But the focus of their contract and their goal for this year was these Phase 1 schools. So this slide is focused on just those 19 we showed you earlier.
Absolutely. And Nathan, go to the next one there. So interval reporting, you can skip one more ahead. Thank you. So some of the visibility that we are passing on to the operations team is we have an interface that ties directly into SRP, which 89% of your electricity is within the SRP territory. The rest is through the city of Mesa. So, you know, some of the, this is just an example of one of the items that we saw through the data. And I can, just interpreting it for you guys a little bit here, would be where you have the red boxes. We were noticing on Sunday evenings from 6:00 to 8:00 o'clock, every Sunday, there was a spike at the Educational Service Center and the Student Services Center. And this spike was just happening consistently. So through the visibility here, we went back to the operations group. And actually, there was some setting that the third floor of the Student Services Center was set to a certain setting within their energy management system. And it just, you know, it was buried within that energy management system, and they were able to correct that. And then you see the green is the difference that that brings in. So that, those are some of the strategies that we've been working with your operations team on to really drill into what's the data telling us, how are buildings being operated, and where can we drive efficiencies in that? You go to the next slide there. I'm going to pass this to Tyler here, and he's going to walk you through the Green Team and the engagement that way.
Thank you, Scott. Next slide, please. So this is to give you a holistic view of the Green Team formation. So really, starting from step one, we had to get approval from school administrators. This involved us creating the professional development for the principals that 21 of the schools' principals attended. Next, we're to inform about conservation goals, really getting down to the ground and see what would be ideal for these schools. Next was assigning the Green Team champions. Those Green Team champions were teachers from each of those 21 efficiency sites. From there, they selected Green Team members and assigned responsibilities and activities. And then, along with Holly's team, we formalized a central location. And then we reviewed and measured those goals each quarter. Next slide, please. And here we have the district or the Green Team energy action items. These energy action items were items that the Green Teams put together in the beginning of the year. As you can see on the right, this is a screenshot from our platform Fusebox. And they set goals on here, energy goals, their Green Team actions, and they have a news feed to interact with each other at those Green Team schools. So at Taylor Junior High, the students put together a student club called the Money Squad. And they came up with ideas on how the school can save money on energy. And those students actually identified where the school had wasted exterior electricity. At Mesa High, their environmental students conducted an energy audit to determine how energy was used across the campus. And at Westwood, they created a bulletin board to educate students and staff about energy and water usage on campus. In addition to that, they asked teachers to create project-based lessons that students analyzed the electric data about those schools and tried to curate solutions to reach those energy goal districts, energy, sorry, those energy goals that they created at the beginning of the year. Next slide, please. So along this process, there was a back and forth between our team and the Green Teams that really facilitated that learning. At Mountain View, they asked if we had any resources or flyers they could give out to teachers on how to shut things down to save energy over breaks or weekends. Along with them, we created a seasonal checklist and strategy flyers. This really helped drive down savings throughout the year or drive up savings. At Westwood, they wanted to see where their high-energy uses were at their school. They were participating with their principal to show them those high-energy use areas, and they were trying to figure out ways to reduce their use. So through our interval data and meter mapping, we helped identify those high-use areas for them to monitor. And at Dobson, Dobson created, Dobson was working with their, with voltage meters to see what type of electrical-run appliances were pulling from the grid. And we had one of our team members go over there and collaborate with those Green Team leaders to show them how that was done. Next slide, please. Here, there's a little picture board to give you an idea of some of the actions that the Green Teams did this year. On the left, you have an infographic. And this infographic, the students wanted to educate other students on different forms of energy use. This one in particular is solar energy, but there were multitudes of other energy usages like natural gas, wind, hydro. In the middle picture there, you have Stapley Junior High, and students are hanging their project on electrical generation to educate students on how Arizona receives their energy. And on the top right are the Green Team leaders from Shepherd Junior High that championed some amazing Green Teams this semester. And this is just to give you a highlight of some of their work that they did this year, and that we're very proud of them. Next slide. Scott?
It would help to take it off of mute. So, yeah, thanks a lot, Tyler. Appreciate it. A lot of great things that are happening and a lot more to come as we get into some opportunities. We're excited for some of the things, obviously, that can happen and the engagement there. So diving, the next piece is dealing with, you know, school closures, looking at, you know, one of the things that we felt was very important, you know, obviously, you know, making sure we understood and taking into consideration just the climate and what's going on. But identifying where possible, the best practices around the early building closures and looking at last year and how buildings were operated and how that is significantly different this year, and what does that look like? So we did create a best practices checklist. This is information that we do pass along to the operations teams and really look to drive as much of a reduction in costs where appropriate over the last seven to eight weeks. So basically, you know, since March 16th, this is where we've really been working to figure out where we can, you know, find opportunities. So this was a best practice that we had put together and distributed out. Next slide, please. You know, so this is, back on the interval reporting, as I showed in an earlier slide, this, what this is, this is an overlay for Red Mountain High School. And this shows, the red is what the usage looked like in 2019. The blue is what it looked like in 2020, so this past, this past, you know, few weeks. So really, what we wanted to do is work with the operations team to reduce, and that you can just see that reduction. And that's a straight reduction in usage and cost right there. So that's avoided cost where that blue line is. Next slide, please. So when we look at what does this mean from a numbers standpoint? So your spring break this year, it was the beginning of March, but Week 1 through Week 6. So this is pulled from our interface, and this is the SRP. So once again, SRP provides 89% of electricity to Mesa Public Schools. So this is data pulled. And so what we're looking at here is really what's that cost avoidance between, you know, the previous fiscal year during this time period and the, and present? And so over six weeks, you can see how significant that is. And it comes to almost a half a million dollars in estimated avoided cost. So there are fees, and there are some other things that show up on your bill that are not included in this. But this is an estimated cost based on kind of a blended rate, what you're paying for electricity currently. So this just shows that through awareness and understanding what, how buildings are being operated and seeing the data, adjustments can be made. And there's a... being operated and seeing the data, adjustments can be made and there's a, there's a significant increase. So when we see that April, those April bills and the May bills from SRP, that should show a significant reduction in costs, you know, for that. Next slide, please. Looking ahead, fiscal year twenty-one, what are some opportunities and goals there? Next slide, please. So the opportunity areas, once again, the, the savings numbers, the reduction that you guys saw on the previous slides really came from understanding the controls that are in place at the different schools, the energy management systems and what data is showing how those buildings are being operated. So that was a huge part is really dialing those in to be as efficient as possible and that what is what led to a significant portion of those savings. District Energy Team, so that, so once again, that opportunity is maintaining, and we're actually going to be expanding the reach to another set of some focus sites. So we're hoping that we can really directly impact that usage as well. Opportunity number two would be a district, a district energy team. So as we're seeing traction, a twenty-one of your schools currently, we want to build on those as soon as we're able to kind of get back in, obviously, and things get back to normal somewhat, hopefully. You know, that's definitely an opportunity area to, to build on some of that engagement in the schools. Water utility monitoring, that's something that is definitely an opportunity. That's your second largest utility expense. And so there are some opportunities around that. And then looking at pools, which a lot of the data, we break out all the pool meters and things like that. So, but, but looking at pools, what that's costing the district, and then also really diving into the portables, classrooms, what are the portables costing the district? Because you have a lot of portables across the district and it's, it's, it's challenging to understand because they're not generally separately metered. So they typically tie into the school meter. So that would be one area that we would want to focus on. Next slide, please. Well, that's, that's the run through. We wanted to keep it within the time, so we had some room for questions. Once again, Gabriel Sanchez is another sustainability manager and Will Meister here, they're listed here because Tyler, Gabriel and Will make up the dedicated Mesa Project Team. And so they're all working together with, with the district to, to really maximize savings, look at strategies and recommendations. So if there are any questions, we'd love to answer anything for you guys.
I have a question, Scott. This is Elaine Minor. Hi, it looks like to me that there is a blend between the members of whatever school are participating in trying to cut costs in energy and you identifying areas where maybe mechanically or billing would cut costs. How much of it is determined after you are through with this process by our staff and our schools participating in some kind of a program after you're gone? Is that a high percentage that we will be depending on that they will continue this? Or are you leading with the notion that there's a lot of those things taken care of now and moving forward, it's going to be a lot easier, if that makes sense?
Yeah, yeah, I think, so in terms of just the programs in the schools, you know, getting things off the ground and making sure that they're sustainable and they kind of carry forward, is that what you're asking?
Yes, yes.
That is, and that is definitely something that can be a challenge, obviously, with a lot of these, because a lot of these are driven by folks in the schools. The data analytics drives it, so that's sitting behind the scenes and really, you know, is operating and provides it. And actually, the schools have visibility into the utility data at their school and what they're, they're seeing there. But the challenge is, and that sustainable part is getting those folks that are, will kind of carry it forward. And we do see this, and we have a lot of strategies that we work with some of these teams and the different schools specifically to, you know, how does that program continue? You know, let's say if we're not here or, you know, let's say even typically what happens is, is there's a green team leader or a couple of green team leaders in those schools that are really the cheerleaders. They're the ones that are taking the team on and really running with it. But what happens if they leave for, you know, some reason? And, you know, so that is a challenge a lot of times with the behavior aspect because the underlying element is they have to have those folks that are excited and can carry it forward. So, you know, that is something that Tyler, when he's going through and doing the professional development, the training, things like that, he's actually really driving some of those principles into it in terms of, you know, here's what we can do to make sure this lasts, right? That this is going to continue on. And so it is a challenge, but we do build in as much from a training aspect as possible on the behavior side of it. And then our hope, our hope on the data side and the operational side within, you know, the folks that, that work in the operations department and they're really controlling the energy management systems is we hope to be able to provide enough training, enough visibility to them that they now are able to run forward and understand and notice some of the potential issues that they're seeing that help, can, that can help reduce costs moving forward as well. That's all that training. I hope I answered your question.
That's helpful. Go ahead. There was somebody else, I think it was Tyler or Scott.
This is Scott Thompson. Sorry. We got lots of Scots tonight. What I wanted to add is that it really is that twofold approach that would you, would you have to keep in mind is the work that we're doing with the, the controlling the energy management systems better, the work we're going to do this summer to replace some of our inefficient units with more efficient units. Those are one-time effects. Once, once you've really achieved that savings, you can't, you can't do much with that once you've figured out like the way that the system needs to run. It really then comes down to the green teams to carry on the, the ability for us to find savings, to look for that human behavior, that way to make sure people turn off the lights behind them or to report a room that they know is too cold or too hot or, you know. So I think that what's, what's good about the process is we're doing a lot of the mechanical stuff today, but we're building those teams of the future so that as the mechanical successes become less and less, because there's just not as much work to be done anymore, then we'll be relying much more heavily as the behavior of the green teams and as we extend that out to the entire district, that those teams will take on the future savings for the district. And, and so we're headed down both paths, but, you know, we've achieved a lot of what we've achieved right now with just purely addressing the issue of, of making sure we've got these systems set right on the right temperatures at the right time and kind of getting more awareness there. But I think the green teams will become the future critical savings for us in the next year or two, for sure.
So we will need to, as a district, have something in place, a plan that is ongoing, ongoing, as Scott Pierce said, sustainable over time. I know I bring that up because when in the early two thousands, maybe two thousand five, we, we approached this similarly, not to this degree certainly, but where we went to all of the schools and tried to find energy efficient ways to run our schools to have savings. And there were reminders and different things in play. And I don't know if that still occurs in our schools or if it kind of petered out and now we're getting back on board again to do this. But I, that would be my concern is that we stay on top of this and we institute some kind of a program that will keep this sustainable over time.
President Minor, I would say that, you know, I know that, I know of a time when Mesa Public Schools was a leader in many of these areas. And I think you've just described it well, that different initiatives over a different amount of time have kind of gotten lost. And I think that's the critical part to this is if we can build it into the culture of the schools, as Scott shared, and really it'll live on, right? It can't be just a district initiative. And not that it was, but that somewhere, somewhere, probably during the recession, a lot of this stuff kind of fell to the wayside because we just, we were just trying to survive. And so unfortunately, this is part of our survival is to figure out these energy savings. So I see with Fusebox and that engagement of kids and the data available to them is kind of a different level of engagement than maybe we've been able to do in the past where we kind of talked theoretically with kids about, hey, turning off the lights are a good thing. Now we can actually measure it and show them, hey, you saved X dollars over the last couple of months or the last year and really engage them in that goal setting, which we've, we've never done in the past. So I think that's where this is a little bit of a game changer.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Is there, is there any incentive besides saving the planet that, that we have for the schools? Like, could they recoup like some of the monies that are saved at each site to fund student programs or, or, or like, you know, like the prom or something like that? Are we, are we looking at, at some ways in which visibly students get to see that, hey, we could be doing something a lot better with this money? Turn off the dang lights because we're saving for prom? You know, something like that? A little bit of peer pressure?
Yes, thank you. That's a great segue so that I can share with you where we are with the green teams. So we originally planned, because we got green teams started in October and they were going to run October to May, we felt like this first year, we talked about giving savings back, but we decided to award a monetary prize and crown green team champions. And we had a first place, a second place and a third place. And there was a couple of thousand dollars we were going to give them each school in those places to seed the work of next year and then talk more about how we could expand the monetary rewards for schools. So what we decided since, since we got preempted with the closure is that we took the prize money that we had put aside, which was about five thousand dollars, and we divided it among all of the nineteen schools. And we gave them a couple of hundred dollars each to get started for next year. And so they could seed their projects, they could, they could start to maybe do some marketing with the students to build capacity and to build the groups. And so we're, we decided that that would be the best way to go. The green team leaders, we're all on board for that. And in the fall, then we, when we restart, we'll have that conversation about what should be the, the incentive slash rewards for next year's participation. But we were all prepared to have a big trophy tonight and call it the green team champions. And unfortunately, we got preempted with the closure, but we're looking forward to being able to do that next year.
I agree with Marcy. I think that will be kind of a, and Elaine, that that will be a piece of making the longevity, that it has actual real benefit to them beyond saving the planet. And that's what will inspire them to keep going. And it just doesn't just get swallowed up. Because I, I remember when, you know, we went through and we made sure no teachers had personal electronics plugged in or, you know, small. And I think that we probably got more lazy with it, not during the recession, as things got a little less tight. And we started thinking, a teacher really is, really feels like a mini fridge makes a big difference in their quality of life, you know? And so we started allowing some of those things to go back in. But I feel like when it becomes something that they are, that they have bought into because it has actual real benefit to them and their campus, not just a good thing to do to save the planet, that's when we'll get longevity in its results.
Yeah, I totally agree. I don't, I'm not talking about like a party or something like that. You know, I mean, I mean, there are a lot of kids that will be motivated simply because it's the right thing to do. But, but to get a bunch of other kids on board, there's, there's, there's got to be, there's got to be a campus-wide benefit that they can, that's tangible for them. So I think that's a, it's a great idea, Holly. Thanks. I appreciate the update.
You know, just, just the activity that Tyler shared about the voltage meter was eye-opening for teachers because they measured how much electricity was being pulled to that pencil sharpener that gets used once a week or once an hour, whatever. And they saw that if you put it on a strip that you could turn off, how much savings you could have. And so there was some power in the lessons that Tyler and Scott provided for our students and our leaders. And they got excited about it. So the momentum is there. And yes, there are kids who are motivated by saving the planet, but they, but we do really have a generation of kids who have an eye towards sustainability and the impact that it does have on the earth. And so, you know, at Red Mountain, they shared at their opening assembly that everybody's a member of the green team. We're just looking for a few leaders to help us. And they, and they, they shared that message that it was expected that everybody is on this team and the, and I like those kinds of things. And so we're seeing some great startup momentum and we're looking forward to next year and how we can even expand it more largely.
I appreciate the efforts. Good job.
Yes, thank you. It's been a great year. I mean, you've gotten so many things accomplished and helpful to the district. And thank you for all of your work and efforts. We appreciate it.
It's our pleasure. So.
You know, I'd be remiss, and I didn't thank Scott and Tyler for their work. They've been great partners in this. But just as important is our operations department and their willingness to sit at the table and talk about how we could do things differently and, and look at the management system differently and really be on top of the memos that Tyler and Scott send us every month and every quarter. The operations department under the leadership of Todd have really embraced this and done some great work. It wouldn't have been possible to get where we are without that partnership. So I'd like to thank Scott and Tyler for leading that, but also make sure that we recognize the work that those teams are doing also.
They've been great to work with. Fantastic.
I'd also like to share it, you know, just, just as kind of a preview to the summer, we do intend to see some of those closure savings, but they are going to be modified the last few months or last few weeks, sorry. We've had the AC on a little bit more because teachers have needed to get into classrooms and prepare for next year and kind of close out this year as best they can. But, but a great example, the conversation we're having today and still working to finalize is we're going to try to be smarter. So we're going to be running the AC more often in the summer because we've got a lot of cleaning and work going on, but we're going to run it primarily between the hours of six and two. And this is something we've learned working with Pierce and understanding those time of use plans. I think everybody's pretty aware that SRP goes up at two o'clock. So if we can, buildings back to an unoccupied mode and everybody gets their work done prior to two o'clock, we're going to save a lot of money because that's the most expensive time all year that we pay for AC and electrical use. And so if we can reduce, if we can have a significant impact on those times, so people still going to get cool buildings, they're still going to be able to do their work. It's just adjusting. We're going to have custodial crews starting at six AM, finishing around two. We're going to have office staff entering the buildings around those times as well so that we can really take away, take advantage of those summertime savings where we can drive down a really significant cost over the next few months, two months here.
Thank you, everyone. And timing was great. We appreciate the presentation. We got a lot of information in a very short amount of time. I know you guys were on a race to do that, Scott and Tyler, and you did a good job. So thank you for your presentation. We appreciate all your work.
Thank you for the opportunity, you guys.
Thank you.
You too.
With that, we are going to move on to the SBA 2021 Political Action Priorities. And we will start with Dr. Lesser on that.
President Minor, members of the board, thank you for a little bit of time this evening to, to kick us off in the conversation about legislative priorities. And I would share with you that this time each year, boards across the state of Arizona identify issues for the Arizona School Boards Association Political Agenda. And along with that, each board identifies a delegate that will be part of a delegate assembly to discuss these issues as well as an alternate if the delegate cannot fulfill that responsibility. In the agenda this evening, you do have access to what are called the 2020 Priority Issues. And Nathan, thank you very much for, for throwing those up on the screen here. You can see the priority issues being adequately and equitably fund district schools to at least the national median for pupil funding, preserve and strengthen local control, improve outcomes for all students, and require public accountability for taxpayer dollars spent on education. Now, there is a timeline for the work that we're going to engage in, and we don't have it as part of one of the documents here, but I will just refresh your memory that the items that we will discuss today that the items that we will discuss today and on May 26th, we will need to create our list to submit to the ASBA by Friday, May 29th. The ASBA Legislative Committee will meet on June 15th. They will then send out to all of the governing board members and superintendents the recommendations from the Arizona School Board Association Legislative Committee. And then on Saturday, September 12th, as part of the law conference, the delegate assembly will discuss these issues. So we're not making any decisions this evening, but we are trying to gain a little bit of momentum to identify the final five priorities that this board would like them to focus on and two alternates that we will vote on at the May 26th governing board meeting. So that being said, Nathan, do we have the page here where it shows all of the bullets that are part of this? Excellent. Go ahead and move that up a little bit so the board can see that. And the governing board has this in your, your documents as well. Before the board talks a little bit about these items, I want to remind you that I will just share with you the bullets that were your priorities last year. So under the blue heading, the first two bullets were two of your priorities the last legislative session, to maximize state funding and to revise the school finance formula to provide stability, dedicated capital, school capital funding, and to ensure the formula addresses the unique financial needs of schools serving students in poverty and rural schools. Then if you go down to the bullet where it says accelerate full restoration of DAA, that is the fourth bullet underneath the blue in the left column. Those three were three of your priorities. Then if I go down into the green, the third bullet in the left-hand column was also a priority, change override budget, increase language to better reflect what voters will be asked to support. And the one below that was one of the two alternatives. Allow school districts better flexibility in the divestiture or use of taxpayer-funded assets. Then under the yellow, I'll take you all the way down to the third bullet from the bottom in the left column. Third bullet from the bottom left column, fully restore CTE funding. That was an alternate. That was one of the two alternates. And if I take you down to the maroon area, the last section, the first bullet, was also one of your five priorities, establish financial and academic transparency for all institutions and individuals that accept public funds. So you had five priorities, two alternates, and that's a summary of where you were last year at this time. So with that being said, Madam President, members of the board, it's open to you probably for maybe about 10 to 15 minutes before we would take a break before the 6:30 meeting to discuss where you see the priorities of this board moving into the 2021 school year.
I think we're quiet because we're looking on here, so don't think we're.
That's a question. Did not we do this, we, we discussed a little bit then, but then we came back with our own priorities, top five? And didn't we, I thought we, we came to consensus by writing them down and we found out that we, there were a lot of us that had the same priorities?
That is a great recommendation, Mrs. Hutchinson. And my recommendation to this group as you think and review and discuss a little bit tonight, I I am hopeful that let's say by the, you know, so we're on Tuesday of this week. Our next board meeting is the 26th. I'd like to say to the group, by the end of the day on May 20th, which is next Wednesday, if I was to get from the group, your, your individual five priorities and your two alternates, that then I would consolidate a list from all five board members that then could be discussed at the, the May 26th board meeting and we could get consensus at that time. So a little bit of discussion today, individual feedback, a consolidated list, and then make a final decision on May 26th. But I thought it would be helpful that if there were things, you know, kind of circling around in each of your heads about, boy, that's still gotta be a priority, or now that we entered this COVID-19, maybe this should be a priority moving forward. For instance, I think that there's great concern about equity of opportunity for students to access internet and digital content. And that may be a bigger issue with the information that we have now. Now, I don't think that I, I have that on the, on the list of their ideas, but it certainly would fit into one of these areas.
I feel, well, it is actually invest in technology and equitability for all students is part of, it's on the, it's in the top section on the right column. But what I was thinking is, given where we are and understanding what the budget realities might be for Arizona going forward, this might be a year as a board, as we look through, that our priorities are more about establishing policies and establishing, like, you know, one of the, maybe we put academic transparency, fiscal transparency for all institutions. Maybe instead of increasing funding, when we understand that that might not look that great for next year, we, we choose to focus on some of those equity pieces or we choose to focus on some of those transparency procedures, things like that, that aren't large costs to the state, but that we would feel are important to focus on in the absence of, of available funds as we recover from, from this last eight weeks.
I think that's really a good point, Jenny, kind of steering us in a direction that will be more advantageous to, to go in this year, taking into account what's going on. That's, I think that's a really important point. I agree with that.
I, I would agree as well. And, and as I was talking with Dr. Lesser today, the fluid, the situation is just so fluid for next year. California universities are not gonna, are not gonna have school in the fall. You know, and, and, and are, you know, are we gonna have, are we gonna have on-ground classes? Are we gonna have kind of a hybrid? Are we gonna have still online classes? It's, so to take a look at maybe some of the things that need our attention in light of the, in, in light of the pandemic, but also the, the things in our, in, in our, our school system, and I don't mean necessarily MPS, but in the state, where this, this crisis has shed light in corners that we haven't been noticing before or, or, or because we were in the midst of an override, we, we had different priorities. I think it's a, it's a, it's a wise suggestion on your part, Board Member Richardson, to take a look at, okay, what is our new reality? And, and, and things are, things have changed dramatically.
Another thought we need to be thinking about, and I may be jumping too quickly to this thought, but between now and then, we are going to need to select people that want to attend the meeting and who wants to be our representative for the September 12th meeting and for the meetings prior to that to identify the priorities of all the school districts as being most important to vote on. So be thinking about that.
Yes, Mrs. Minor, you're absolutely correct that this is not an item where we're making any decisions this evening. So it, in the conversation, if a board member is interested in being the delegate for this conversation or the alternate, then I, I think it's a benefit for the group to know of their interest. And then on the 26th, we would, would actually make a motion and, and a second and a vote on the delegate and alternate.
Okay, but I have to, I have to tell you that I would not be a delegate or an alternate because I am on the legislative committee and I cannot be a delegate or alternate if I'm on the committee. So I, I, I'm out. So I'll be attending the committee and, and reporting back.
You're on the committee. Good job, Marcy.
Thank you. At my, it's, you know, it's something I'm very, very interested in, so.
And Stephen, Stephen did it for, and then Kiana did it last year. I'm great. I'm glad you're on the committee.
Thank you.
It's been my impression that what we're doing now is kind of like a little bit of a feeder into the whole process. But the majority of the work that gets done is done by those 20 or 25 people that are in that room, where they take the kind of the input from as kind of a starting point, but then it morphs considerably based upon the people that are there. So your, your role in that will be considerable in trying to set that tone for next year. So I'm, I'm very glad that you're, and I was curious if anyone was on the committee for this coming year because that's where most of the work gets done. And I appreciated Kiana serving on it last year. You know, I guess to that point then, Marcy is, we're gonna set these, these, kind of these priorities by, in two weeks. But by the time that you meet in June, it could be a whole other landscape completely that we'd be looking at. And so I, I guess it's more important than anything else that you kind of have our feel and our, our interest at stake. I know that when we were facing this, something similar, there was discussion in trying to save money, you know, to reduce the number of school days, all kinds of things that, you know, are being discussed. And so a lot of those didn't get, didn't get a lot of action because the, the school board, the Arizona School Board Association, I felt, were behaving more like kids in a candy store. They wanted everything because they weren't, because they weren't practical or realistic at all usually. And they would, they would largely get ignored because their, their demands were so far out of the realm of what was, of what was reality. And so to the extent that you and, and your efforts as you meet with that committee then in June and try and help to ground them in priorities that will make them a player that people want at the table, listen to their, you know, to, to the ASBA's input to get guidance from and, and make those suggestions practical. So for instance, for me, I, I found when we meet with our, with our, with our, with our group, the Teachers Association, they give us valuable feedback. And as we go through their meet and confer process, we look to them for input because the input they give is practical, it's, it's appropriate, it's, it's, it's informed, it's, you know, it's, they have, when we were in the middle of, of no raises, they didn't come back demanding a 10% increase. They came back saying, well, you know, you can only spend so much, so why don't you split over here or do that with it? And so to the extent that you can guide that group to doing things then that will make them a player at the table, that would be a great benefit. I'll get off my soapbox, but I appreciate you being on that committee.
Thanks. Thank you for the advice, Stephen. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Stephen, was it your experience when you were and Kiana that there was a lot of emphasis that was helpful for the rural school districts? But the, the larger districts, East Valley area or the Phoenix, Maricopa County area, didn't seem to have as much representation, ASBA? I know that ASBA needs to be more helpful to the rural because they don't have the resources we don't, we do. But did you find that also when they were determining which priorities they would have for the year?
I'll let Kiana speak, but I, I did not find it that way. I found it to be fairly balanced and, and input and, and interested in input from all aspects.
I, I think what you may have heard is often because there is more representation from Maricopa County and more, obviously more delegates, more people. ASBA for, I want to say, the last three years have always made a plea for delegates from rural areas and actually made sure that they are inclusive and bring up the issues that we may not be thinking about when we, because as even in general meetings, you hear people say the state of Maricopa. So when they talk about our size and the number of people who have access and can come, I find that a lot of times that they're very mindful with, you know, an equitable lens to bring up the rural areas and things that may not be top of mind for us who are not in rural areas. So I do believe that the discussions were very balanced to look at all of the challenges that happened, but never forgetting about the rural areas, especially reservations. And I think there will be, this session, definitely time to think about that. Because as you bring about it, I just had a picture in my mind about reservations and what's happening in the Navajo reservation and all that's going on right now. So I just think that I'm really proud of the job that's done to help us not to just be centric of our priority. And especially being the largest school district, I think there's always time to look to Mesa and what we're doing and actually have our input, but, you know, bringing everyone on board.
Thank you, Kiana.
You.
Okay, any other questions or comments about the legislative session?
Madam President, if, if I may just share a few thoughts with you, I thought that this might be helpful. This is absolutely your list of priorities that we will decide at the May 26th meeting. But from some of our experts in our organization, these are some of the things that came to mind when I asked them about what have we been struggling with or what's of interest to them. And if I could just quickly share those thoughts, enact a research-based reform of the English language learner model, which may include a primary language literacy to improve student achievement, the invest in equitable technology for all students, CTED funding and funding for students and internships, funding for preschool programs. Of course, you're hearing a lot of funding things going on, and I know that's the complexity of, of if there's not funding available moving into the next year just because of, of what COVID-19 has done to, to our economy. But I thought it's, it's worthwhile to, to hear some of those things. Competency-based learning versus seat time. You know, that may be an important conversation to have during this, you know, remote learning, brick and mortar learning and how that's balanced and, and how we move kids through the learning process. Maybe some flexibility and accountability for the innovation school bill that would impact schools that are changing the way that they're doing learning. And maybe this is, you know, even more pronounced during this time that it will, that will be digital as well as remote and, and brick and mortar. Safe and reliable internet for students to access equitable learning opportunities with technology. And, and this is a reoccurring conversation in the state, possibly conducting an exceptional student services cost study to know that if, if the resources that are being provided to districts certainly clearly represent the, the cost associated with educating students with special needs. So those are a few of the things that came from our people.
Are you going to be emailing that list to all of us?
Certainly, I can share that with all of the board members. Absolutely.
Great. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Really helpful to have heard. Yeah, I appreciate that. And I'm looking, thank you for sending the list on to us.
Anyone else have any questions or further conversations on this topic before we adjourn for a little bit of a break and then come back at 6:30? Okay, then with that, if I don't hear anybody, oh, I'm sorry.
Madam President, it would just be. Madam President, it, it would just be a valuable time that if there's anybody on the board, Marcy said, hey, I'm already on the Legislative Committee. Are there others that would be interested in being a delegate, knowing that we will vote on that next time?
We've avoided that question, Dr. Lesser. We're all hiding in corners, like when you're on Southwest Airlines and you don't look people in the face if you have a middle, empty, empty middle seat.
There you go.
Same thing. Those were the days, right?
I, I bailed last year. And so if there's, if someone else wants to, I don't mind doing it this year.
Thank you, Stephen. Thank you. Who would be the alternate?
I think last year was the year that, like, we all ended up with something on that very Saturday. So I know I covered like an hour of it and then have these get married. So right now, my schedule is open and I could also help or be an alternate.
A lot of conferences have been canceled.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate that a lot. Okay, with that, I need a motion. Oh, did you need one more thing?
No, I'm good. Thank you, though.
Okay. With that, I need a motion then for adjournment of, out of our study session.
I move that we adjourn.
All right. Jenny, Jenny Richardson moves for adjournment. Do I hear a second?
Second, Marcy Hutchinson.
Thank you, Marcy. I need a vote, starting with Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Mrs. Richardson.
Aye.
Mrs. Hutchinson.
Aye.
Mrs. Sears.
Aye.
Elaine Minor, aye. Thank you. That's a 5-0 to adjourn at 6:12 PM.
Question.
Yes.
We're using the same feed for the 6:30 meeting, right? So I can just leave this one logged in?
Yes, that is correct. 6:30, we'll be back on the same feed.
I think that would, Mrs. Hollins, should we mute as well as mute the video as well? Is that appropriate for everybody on?
That would be correct. If you can mute your microphones, turn off your cameras, and just remember to turn those back on when you rejoin at 6:20. The feed will stay alive with a, a whole slide. We'll be back.
Thank you.